Please silence all electronic devices. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Snile, take the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Ms. Carnes.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Hamilton.
Present.
Mr. Preswellinsky.
Present.
Ms. Silvas.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stumling.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
And everyone has got in a copy of the regular meeting of June 18. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to accept is presented.
Motion by Councilman Simmons and seconded by Councilman Beatry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reports of standing committees. Councilman Dabney.
All right. And tonight's Finance Committee meeting, which was called the order by myself at 6:07 PM, I was present along with our other committee members for Preswellinsky and Beatry. Also present were council members Carnes, Fitzpatrick, and Simmons. And City Controller Rich Murphy was also in attendance. And we went over the claims and I'll just review the claim totals right now from our riverboat. We had the amount of $324,495.61 from the Boyd Development Fund. We had $24,506.56 for total claims of $349,217. There weren't any other issues to discuss. And the docket was approved on a motion by Councilman Preswellinsky and a second by Mr. Beatry. And we adjourned at 6:16 on a motion by Councilman Preswellinsky and a second by Councilman Beatry. The claims, summary of the claims goes as follows. From the riverboat, we had Global Engineering and Land Surveying for $54,462.50. Hassan Associates LLC, $10,387.45. Washington Kelly Inc., $14,463.88. And Waymeyer APS Inc., doing business as Waymeyer for $568 even. And we had an EFT that was paid to the Indiana Department of Transportation NDOT for $244,613.78 for a total out of the riverboat, once again, of $324,495.61. Payments that came out of the Boyd Development, The Beecher Newspaper, $445.50. Butler Fairman and Suford Inc., $5,194.80. George Perowitz, $266.68. We Create Media, $14,602.58. And WEFM Radio for $3,997 even for a total amount coming out of the Boyd Development Fund for $24,506.56. Once again, for a total claims docket of $349,217. And that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thanks, Councilman. Are there any other reports of standing committees? I don't believe so. Reports of special or select committees? I have a report being the liaison to the Human Rights Commission. And we had our monthly meeting this afternoon. And just want to report that three of the commissioners stepped down due to personal reasons. Steve Garner, Sharon Wright, and Joanne Tedesco. And I want to thank them for their service that they had on the commission. All three of them did a fantastic job and are moving on to other things in their life. With that being said, if anyone is interested in being on the Human Rights Commission, what you need to do is go to the clerk's office and fill out a commission sheet that at that time you could check the box, say you want to be on the Human Rights Commission, and write down your objectives and interests and qualifications. And then that will be moved on either to the mayor or to the council, depending on whose appointment these three that we will be filling. And also at the meeting this afternoon, the Human Rights Commission nominated and voted in as their youth commission nominee, and that is Mr. Chris Lane. He's going to be the nominee from the Human Rights Commission. And the Human Rights Commission will then draft a letter and send that to the city clerk, as the other commissions have. And then it'll be sent on to the city council. So the Human Rights Commission is taking care of their part of that. Moving on to reports of other city officers and departments. And with us this evening is Mr. George Kasmerczak from the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation to present the 2018 Grant Awards and present a resolution for the outgoing board member, Mr. Ron Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council, and clerks. My name is George Kasmerczak and represent the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation. This commission started June 10 of 1997 through the efforts of Blue Chip Casino, Mayor Sheila Burleson at that time, and the Indiana Gaming Commission. In doing so, this established an endowment fund to be granted to nonprofit groups engaged in the welfare and well-being of citizens in the Michigan City School District. Projecting the school district, the beneficiaries outside of Michigan City limits were gained are gained being recipients of a vast number of programs that these organizations provide. We closed our 21st year in providing grants to a diversified group of organizations. Since the community enrichment corporations inception, a total of $15.3 million has been utilized for these programs. Part of this endowment has been earmarked to the Michigan City Zoo in the amount of $100,000 annually. And that does not change from year to year. They have received over the number of years, $2.1 million. Is Blue Chip aboard the Michigan City? I think we know what that answer is. You have before you the 2019 list of organizations and awards, their amounts awarded them. This year, there were requests totaling $1.6 million. Unfortunately, we could only award $633,000 because we are capped as far as the dollar amount that we do receive on an annual basis, which is $750,000. There were a total of 72 grant requests, and unfortunately, only 48 awards were made. The last few years, these numbers have averaged nearly the same amount. Unfortunately, not all receive funding. The process by the board is time-consuming and unanimously agreed upon. Organizations must follow guidelines set by the board, and once an award is made, required to report quarterly on their spending along with receipts. In doing so, we have to report to the state our funding and how these organizations perform. So we're not alone as far as reporting. One of our changes that occurred is that the Zoo Department presents to the board how funds will be used and what changes, additions, and programs are being done. This gives us an updated picture where the past dollars were awarded and no factual contact was ever done between the zoo and the board. In the future, beginning with the second city council meeting in April, our board will provide the awards list as provided today and a financial statement of the board's funds, so that you have a good picture as to what we do. Any questions regarding that part? Second part of the presentation is to acknowledge a person who's next to me, Ron Miller, who's been the standard bearer and chief spokesman for the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation. He has a wealth of knowledge of nearly all of the organizations listed in the awards program, and we might as well say just about all the groups in La Porte County. Through his endeavors as a businessman and a member of our board, his efforts were endless and unheralded, hours spent in promoting community enrichment and the organizations, truly an ambassador for Michigan City. Having been on the board since June 2013, I have no doubt that we would not be where we are today without his intercedings. Functioning as one unit for the betterment of the community, the first few years were chaotic, confused, and several agendas trying to be administered. These last few years have been structured and became a working unit with purpose and structure in mind. Today, without much fanfare and a bit of recognition, I'd like to read and present a resolution from our board for all that he has done for Michigan City Community Enrichment Corp. and Michigan City, as well as the general public in La Porte County. Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation, Resolution Number 2019-1. A resolution commending Ron Miller's service as president of the Board of Directors for the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation. Whereas Ron Miller has served as president of the Board of Directors of the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation, resigning effective March 31, 2019. That's about the only bad thing that we can remember him doing. Whereas Ron Miller has performed his duties with the utmost professionalism and dedication, caring a great deal about what was best for the Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation. And whereas Ron Miller showed respect for the board directors of Michigan City Community Enrichment Corporation, always listening and working together for the best interest of the corporation. And whereas the Board of Directors wishes to thank Ron Miller for his service as an ambassador for public relations and charitable work in Michigan City community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors of Michigan City Enrichment Corporation hereby recognizes, commends, and thanks past president Ron Miller for his dedicated service. Approved by the Board of Directors. Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, thank you.
Mr. Miller, would you like to say a few words?
You know how shy I am.
Exactly. That's why I'm inviting you up here.
Thank you very much, George. I didn't know about this till I saw the agenda this morning. Figured I probably should be here. I can't believe it's been six years. Time went by so quickly. I think some of you can relate to this. But I was honored to be with the group of individuals during that six years. Tell you an interesting story. I was thinking about it. The first time I was elected to an office with the enrichment corporation, George challenged it. And it wasn't personal. George and I have known each other for years, but it was his dedication to detail. And he said, "We want to make sure if we're going to do something, we do it right." And we did. And that's what makes me feel so good about those six years is that, as I told you with the report that I gave you in March, during my six years, we distributed over $4 million to not-for-profit organizations in the Michigan City area. And you think about the number of kids, the number of seniors, the number of people with injuries or illnesses that were helped by that $4 million over that six years. And what the organizations might have not been able to do were that money not available. As I said to you then, we are so fortunate to have a partner like Boyd Gaming and their commitment to Michigan City. But the other eight members that served with me and the people who served before that are why this got done. It was all of us working together. And it was an honor to serve on the enrichment corporation. I have to admit, it's nice sitting back a little bit and watching it now instead of participating. But I have even a greater respect for the people who serve on that board and for all of you as well, because sometimes you have to make some difficult decisions that are not very popular sometimes. And when you have $1.6 million worth of requests and you can award $630,000, it's not always the easiest decision. But it was a pleasure for me to serve for six years. And I thank the enrichment corporation and the city council for this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller. Are there any comments from the council? Mr. Simmons?
Just on a personal note, I'd like to thank Ron for the six years of dedication to the enrichment program. As always, you always do an excellent job. Thank you.
Any other council members like to say anything, Mr. Miller? I would like to say, Mr. Miller, Ron, thank you very much for your dedication to this organization. I think you did a fantastic job. And you know, anyone that puts six years into something like you did for this and did such a fantastic job, I want to thank you very, very much for that. I mean, a lot of people in this, some folks in the city don't like to get involved, but I think as being a citizen of your community, you need to get involved to make your community better. And that's what you did. You made Michigan City better by participating on the Community Enrichment Corporation. So I thank you for that. And Mr. Kasmerczak, thank you for the presentation this evening. It's very good. And thank you for your services also to the endowment corporation. Okay, moving on. We have the claims docket. And with the claims docket this evening, under Fund 2042, Riverboat Claims, $324,495.61. And Fund 2031, the Boyd Development, $24,506.56. All those in favor of paying the claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Ms. Snile, any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on June 17 and the 24th on DLZ Weekly Activity Reports regarding the ESG Energy Project. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on June 21 from Ms. Dahlia Zegus, representing the Commission of Women Appointment to the Youth Leadership Commission, being Alexis Reynolds.
Thank you, Ms. Snile. Are there any resolutions this evening?
There are no resolutions.
And our first ordinance on first reading by title only, without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, creating Article 15 and Chapter 22 entitled Landlord Registration Program and Rental Safety Inspection and Verification Program. And this is introduced by Ms. Carnes.
And does the author have anything that she would like to add at this time?
I do. As a Ford City Council person, probably the number one complaint I got is about dilapidated and deteriorating houses in the neighborhood. When those houses are owner-occupied, code enforcement typically works with the people to get them up to code. And I have seen that be successful in many cases. Unfortunately, when it's a landlord situation, a lot of times it's difficult to identify the landlord. And by the time we work through the process with code enforcement, many times the homes are often so deteriorated that we end up having to demolish these homes. Michigan City was awarded $2.3 million in lead remediation grant, available both to homeowners and rentals. And part of that grant is requirement is a list of lead-safe rental property. So that is another impetus for this ordinance. And we do have money to provide remediation for this through this grant. So I would encourage people, whether they're homeowners or rental, or whether they rent, to look into this if they believe they have an issue with their houses. There'll be no cost for the inspection. So in the interest of encouraging quality housing stock and improving our neighborhoods, I'm introducing this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carnes. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public who should speak on this ordinance?
Yeah.
Come to the microphone, please, and state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Bill Shaver, 2503 Oak Street in Michigan City. My wife and I are landlords. We have been for several years. We have single-family residences scattered throughout the city, predominantly in the Knapp School, Marsh School, Old Edgewood, Gardenia Park neighborhoods, and Elston Grove. And in our years, we've never had one problem with the city of any kind. And when we have had a request to the city, they've responded, I think, pretty favorably. So as a landlord who has been doing this for a while, I'm speaking in favor of a registration and inspection process. I just want to, I spent a career in the oil industry. It's heavily regulated. And I'm just hoping at the very beginning that this can come out of the chute in a way that gives a result that the city is hoping it gets. To that end, I have a few questions, and I know you don't want to get into a Q and A. So maybe at some point you could let me know where we could go to get the questions answered. First of all, has an inspection form been created? And if so, even if not, will it be available for public and stakeholder review? Second, will there be inspectors for each of the trade disciplines? So when an inspection happens, is it going to be a water guy, electrical guy, plumbing guy? Or is just, is somebody going to come as a representative of all those skills, all those disciplines? How's that going to work? Is it going to be current staff? Or is the city going to hire additional folks to do this? Because there's, at present, as good as the city is, there is a bit of delay in getting a response to stuff. And adding, I don't know how many thousand, single-family and multifamily residences to an inspection list could be a bit problematic. What is planned for instances where the house is no longer compliant with code, not because the house has changed, but because the code has changed? We have, we've had, we have a few contracts with Michigan City Housing Authority. We have had a couple of failed inspections. In both cases, it was due to tenant activity, not landlord activity. Under the terms of the agreement with the housing authority, it's incumbent on the tenant to make those repairs. In each, each of the cases, tenant couldn't afford to do it. We just went ahead and did it, worked out an issue, worked out the solution. But what I'm concerned about in the inspection process, for the most part because the process itself is unknown, is if a burden is placed on a landlord to cure tenant-related issues, what's the plan to work with the landlord on that? Because that'll take some time. And as I looked through the ordinance, I did not see any provision for landlord remedy or appellate rights. On the, on the registration side, just to, I'm sure you guys already know, the Michigan City Water Department already has a landlord registration process. The Michigan City Housing Authority, of course, has a landlord registration process. And La Porte County has a landlord registration process. So as you move forward, it may be a great time to reach out to those other three agencies. Two of them are already under the city umbrella and come up with a single process that could be used across all departments. Outside of the inspection and registration process, and in general regarding city finances, I'm wondering about the startup costs. I'm always, especially because of my years in the oil industry, I'm always suspicious of something that starts with no fees. It generally doesn't end that way. What are the startup costs? What are the anticipated first-year expenses and first-year operating expenses? So if there's no incremental operating expenses, meaning we're going to do it with current staff, current vehicles, how's the workload going to be managed? And how are these timelines going to be met? If there are going to be staffing increases, who's going to administer it? How much is it going to cost? Is there going to be more vehicles and so on? I want to affirm, I'm not being critical. My wife and I, we talked about this. We're not critical about this. Our single biggest issue as investors in Michigan City is the condition of the homes and properties around us. And in doing this for about six years now, I have never had a tenant come to me who didn't first complain about their prior landlord. And before we bring somebody into one of our properties, we go look and see where they're currently living. And it's, I agree completely that there's a, there is a need to address how landlords are managing their properties. So I'd just like to conclude that we agree it's a good idea. My wife and I, we do think that involving stakeholders, landlords, and other people, if they haven't already been consulted, I think you'll find some good people willing to work with you to get this off the ground and do it in a way that gives you the result that you're hoping you're going to get without adding, you know, 12 months from now, coming in, needing to draw some money out of some fund because it, you know, it costs a fortune to operate this thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak?
Yeah, hello. My name's Rob Johnson. I live at 106 Garden Trail. I'm a member of RMC, which is Organized and United Residents of Michigan City. I want to start, I'm speaking in support of this ordinance. I want to start with some demographic information about Michigan City. Actually said a lot of it already, but Michigan City, I got to learn a lot about its housing situation by working on the mayor's committee on lead. Obviously, lead poisoning mostly comes from housing, and that the grant that you're getting is what kind of instigated this whole process. So just to fill in some of the numbers, in Michigan City, roughly half of people rent. It's a lot of people. About half are working poor and thus, you know, are mostly renting at the lower end of the spectrum. Deteriorated housing is one of the more obvious physical features in our city. Just, you know, drive around and look. And unfortunately, it's not really tracked. The thing that you see it come out in is lead poisoning. So when we, I'm sure some of you have seen the presentation I gave that shows, you know, areas where 30% of the kids or 25% are poisoned with lead in Michigan City, that's a direct result of deteriorated rental housing for the most part. And we're also a city where a lot of people are eligible for Section 8. But from talking to the housing authority, they have right now like hundreds of people who are eligible but can't find anybody who takes it, which is a little weird. Why would landlords not take free money? But right now, the problem is that when you, as that gentleman said, when you take Section 8, you have to bring your housing up to a certain standard. What people at the housing authority were saying is that right now, there's a, a lot of people in Michigan City are so desperate to find somewhere to live that they'll go somewhere even if they can't use a voucher just to get a roof over their head. And there's a certain segment of the landlord community that's perfectly happy to provide substandard housing for a price, not fix it up, and let people live in it. So I think that's what makes this ordinance such a really good thing, is it basically brings everybody onto the same page. No longer can you get away with providing substandard housing and go, eh, forget the Section 8, I'll just kind of let things skate. So we as RMC are very much in support of this ordinance. We think it's really good to bring the activity of sort of inscrupulous business people under the light. We believe everybody has the right to live in safe and, you know, healthy housing. I think this ordinance needs some fixes, and some other people are going to be talking about some of those tonight. And we look forward to talking to all of you about what we think would make this process better. But I want to thank Councilwoman Carnes for suggesting this. I think it's a really great idea. And I'll shut up. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? This gentleman here was...
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Douglas Sims and I am a property owner and a business owner here in Michigan City. I am president of the Northwest Indiana Landlords Association. And I caught wind of this on Facebook. Someone actually, or someone posted that this ordinance was coming up. It's like, whoa, okay. And I spent the afternoon reading it online. Unfortunately, I couldn't print out and thank you for a copy of it. Having briefly gone through this, I could agree with you in the aspect of having some type of registration for landlords. I've been president of my organization for approximately three years. And I can assure you, all of our landlords would comply with anything that you would have to submit. I do have questions. I don't believe that the input of property owners has actually been placed into this document. And I believe the motivation is that grant. Well, I know that we've had individuals from local government agencies come to our organization and actually discuss with us late abatement. They've given us information and they've actually provided services for that late abatement if we had that problem. So I can see the city being motivated to get the grant money. But there are organizations out there that actually are conscious and in contact with people of property. So as I said, I briefly read it this afternoon. I started highlighting things and of course, when I initially read it, it's just like, come on. They just want to take money from us. And then as I continued to read it, it's like, well, okay, this is not bad. But I have a criticism in one part and I can't, I can only remember that the, once a report is generated, that the tenants or clients are paying a copy of this report, which is fine. But I have had, in my 20 years of experience of being a landlord, I own property on the west side of the city. And the west side of the city definitely needs improved housing. There are a lot of, I've had this property here for 20 years and I've maintained it. But I've constantly ran into people not respecting the property. And if you are going to issue a form from people that, okay, I live in this property and, oh gee whiz, he had that fixed last time. Let's see if I can break that. I have had people actually break things and call the health department, call the city, complaining that I am running, you know, a property that isn't livable. And I've had inspectors from the city come out and I've taken their advisement and corrected the problem. And I still run into tenants that continue to do that. So I do have issue with a few parts of this agreement. I would be happy to volunteer my time as a property owner to be able to assist in modifying this so that it would be more palatable for our organization. But yes, there are some bad landlords in Michigan City. But I can assure you, every member in our organization is not. Because we look to improve not only property in Michigan City, but our members' lives. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I, I've worked with, the landlord association was a member of it for quite some time.
Name in the first place. Thank you.
Mark Sherman, 810 Cedar Street, Michigan City, Indiana. I own numerous rental properties in town. And again, the number of good property owners far outweigh the few that are bad. I've worked with Chief Swistec over with some property issues in, in Elston Grove. We didn't, we cured a lot of those problems and we didn't add a whole bunch of bureaucracy and extra people and everything. We went after that particular property and the owner. The owners can be found very easily. Somebody's paying taxes unless it's in a trust. And there's not a lot of them that's in a trust. Okay? So you can contact that owner. We've, we've actually done, sat down with the owners and had talks with them. State, state law is, and I'm, I'm a licensed lead remediator. And it's, it's against law for anybody to allow somebody in a property that they knowingly know that it's got lead in. Number one, it's damage to a child that can never be corrected. So there's, there's a lot of other things like the health department and everything that backs this all up. I, I don't think we're South Bend, which this form, this thing looks a lot like South Bend's. Again, it's in your best interest to come and talk to the landlords and work out a solution to the problem. Free registrations don't always end up free. And if it's not free to us, you can guarantee that we're going to raise rent. The other thing is, on a final note, is I don't know how many of you have tried to get through the housing authority to become registered with them. It's not a hard thing. I've done HUD homes. I've done FHA. It's not hard to meet. The problem with them is, well, we might get around there in two months or a month to inspect it. And if we don't like something, he's pretty busy. You don't know when he'll come back and do it. Because I've, I've had several good tenant tensions of having Section 8 tenants. And every time I went down there, I've got to run around. I can't have a property sitting for three or four months waiting on inspectors and pay my taxes and insurance. So I, I think you need to have a form here if you're going to do this. And it's got to be worked out with landlords in town.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Marisa Chapels. I live at 229 Southwood Drive. I'm also a member of RMC. I'm a mother of two small children, also a full-time social work student at PMW. I've lived in Michigan City for three years and I'm a renter. I have family of friends that rent in Michigan City. And as we heard, that isn't surprising because about 50% of Michigan City are renters. It is my understanding that this ordinance is not just about lead, although that is a big and important part of it. It's also about protecting renters. I'm here to state our strong support for this program and mention a few changes I'd like to see. One is the mention of landlords who live on the property being exempt if they have two rental units. I think rental units need to be inspected regardless of whether the landowner, the property owner lives on the property or not. But the biggest change that we want to see is regarding displacement. So if the landlords are going to be fixing properties to pass inspections, we need to consider the costs, the renters to find maybe temporary places to stay during construction. Of course, landlords should pay for this. So the funds that landlords pay into for failing to register, those $500 fees that are listed, it would make sense to use those fees to pay for the possible displacement. We would also, right, so we want to see displacement addressed in the future in this ordinance. Again, I'm happy to see the city addressing the problem of slum lords in Michigan City. As many people have mentioned, there are dilapidated houses owned by landlords all across Michigan City. We look forward to seeing this ordinance passed by the city council, what the change is recommended, signed by the mayor and implemented to protect Michigan City residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance?
Trish Taylor. I'm resident of Allegan, Michigan, but I own property here. I've been a landlord for 15 years and I just learned of this because Doug sent an email. I'm, I'm a member of the landlord, Northwest Indiana Landlord Association as well. I too think, you know, there, I live at, when I come to Michigan City, I stay in an area that has two landlords that own double-digit properties where I'm encountering shootings happening in the night, nuisance properties. And it would be great to be able to have a place to, for residents to report those when it comes to, it's a safety issue for the entire neighborhood. And then also their properties get dilapidated. But on the same token, as the first gentleman said, there's a number of us, like I have had residents that have moved because they had a flooded apartment that nobody ever cured. It just needs to be looked at a little bit more closely. I've not seen the ordinance because I just got this email an hour ago. But I have friends that own properties up in Michigan that have annual inspection or biannual inspection. And they're charged $300 per inspection. And it's getting to the point where $300 may not sound a lot, but if you have $300 per house, you have three houses. As a landlord, your margins are incredibly slim. I keep my rents lower to keep tenants that are good tenants in there because as the folks have said, you have tenants that tear up your properties. So then if you, every time they move out, you're having to do so many repairs, you're never, you're never getting ahead. So between property taxes, insurance and doing things the right way. But that is my fear too, that there would be a registration for this, that, you know, I'll just walk away. I'll sell my properties and then it's the folks that move in. It's these bad landlords that are not here tonight. These are obviously the landlords that care. They'll take over those properties. They scoop them up left and right. And there needs to be a way, first off, to try and report those folks. But I know this is your way of trying to figure out who those people are. So it would be great to have a committee of landlords and tenants so we could talk it out and figure it out. Because there's just things you're just not going to think of unless you're in those shoes. Because we, you know, we want a safe community for everybody.
Thank you.
I'm Amy Straka, 108 Trump Court. And I'm also a member of RMC, Organized and United Residents of Michigan City. And I'm a homeowner here, but I've been a renter. And I've had some great landlords and I've had some pretty sketchy ones too, with some questionable things going on with repairs. And as a homeowner in my neighborhood, I've seen people living in properties that they're paying rent for and not having things repaired, adding to disrepair in the city, in our aging housing stock. As a home visitor, my job for child welfare and child abuse and neglect prevention, I have an opportunity to go into a lot of homes in the city and see some of the conditions that people are willing to accept to avoid homelessness. Folks that are renting properties that are not safe to occupy. But that's only a small percentage. And I think that in this ordinance, the target of these fees is that small percentage of folks who aren't maintaining their properties and who aren't providing safe housing for people to live in. I know folks are concerned about the registration fees possibly going up. Free to register sounds to be true. State of Indiana has capped it at $5. So that's not a concern they need to have. It already went to appeal. It already went to the Supreme Court. We did read the ordinance. We went over it. We looked at ordinances in South Bend, in Hammond, in Bloomington, with very similar language. We talked with folks who are implementing those ordinances now and some of the things that they've hit, some of the questions that they've had and solutions that they and places around the country have used to mitigate displacement. And to be certain that there are ways to mind the fact that when people are maintaining their properties, they don't need those frequent inspections. South Bend's implemented a tiered system of starting with the most problematic frequent offenders of these complaints coming in and targeting those in the first year. Looking at folks who have things on point, not coming back for maybe four years. We have spoken with some of the people in South Bend about how that's going and people have been very receptive to that. They've also kept a list of some of those best landlords that when people are being displaced from these properties that are not inhabitable or safe, they have an opportunity to be connected with honest, good landlords who will make certain that they are safe when they are moved to those other properties. There are some things that need to be worked on, but that's why this is a first reading, to give an opportunity for us to come together, to come together with folks in the city. And a lot of people are talking about putting together a panel of landlords, getting landlords. So there's 100 landlords, maybe? 50% of the city rents, that's like 15,000 people. And those are the more serious needs that we need to guard. It might take a little something to prime the pump on this as far as getting it started. But once those fees come in for folks that aren't complying, that's going to sustain the program. When you're looking at the budget, the priority for keeping people safe, 15,000 people safe, should be enough to toss a little salary behind some extra code enforcement. Now, also want to bring up the fact that being a landlord is a business and these things are cost of doing business. Maintaining your property is a cost of doing business. Paying inspection fees is a cost of doing business. Folks that rent commercial properties have them inspected. Section 8 properties are inspected. HUD is inspected. This is just the last piece of the puzzle to make certain that all of the housing here in Michigan City is safe. So we just want to say, Organizing United Residents of Michigan City is really in support of this. This is something that could be a game changer for a lot of folks who are renting. And we're happy to participate in this process. Thank you to Sharon Carnes for putting this forward. I know Ron Mear put something similar forward back in 2007. In 2007, it was shot down by mostly landlords coming to speak. And in 2008, they tried to put forward smoke alarms. And that got a lot of resistance from landlords too. It did pass unanimously with city council. And now, providing smoke alarms is just part of normal, normal daily business when you're a landlord. And after this passes, maintaining your property to a safe livable standard will also be part of normal daily business or you'll go out of business. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the public who wants to speak?
Hi, Sarah Johnson, 106 Garden Trail. I'm also a member of RMC and I also fully support this ordinance. I think it's desperately needed in the city and it's also been very successful in other cities. So it's not something new. We have a lot of places to look at in Indiana and beyond. In response to some of the landlord concerns, if you're keeping up your property, then you don't have anything to worry about. And if you're not, then you're going to have to move forward with making those fixes. I've personally been in dozens of houses here in Michigan City that are rentals because I worked for Head Start for two and a half years and I was in the Family Services Department. And I was disgusted by what I saw people had to be living in, not because they chose to live like this, but because they didn't have an option. Roofs caving in, furnaces that didn't work, so they had to have space heaters, electric wiring that was exposed and also part of it not working. All of these things affect kids' health. Also lead paint, of course, chipping in the homes. All of these things affect folks' health and then kids are going to school, they're sick, there's mold in homes. And people should expect the same level of safety and habitability that I would expect when I own my home and want to live somewhere that's safe. I want to reiterate that being a landlord is a business and it should be regulated. We have a housing code that lays out what is safe and what is habitable. And we should be making sure that all of these homes are up to that standard. Other cities have passed these RSVP ordinances and have been able to hold landlords accountable to fixing unsafe housing conditions. And I think this is a great opportunity for the city to really make a positive change for tens of, tens of thousands of people who live here. I agree with some of the measures that have been mentioned earlier to look further into. And I think there's an opportunity to do that. This is the first reading, so hey, that's the, the point. But I also think that we need to look at providing more affordable housing in the city, potentially public housing, and looking at getting more landlords to offer Section 8 and making that process go a little bit smoother because a bunch of people in line, not enough places for them to go. And it's only going to get worse. So I fully support this and I look forward to making these changes happen. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wants to speak? Anyone else from the public who wants to speak? Anyone else from the public who wants to speak? Public comments now close. Council comments? Councilman Davi?
All right. First of all, I just want to say this is extremely, extremely important to me. Um this is something that I caught wind of that was actually happening in South Bend. Um so I decided to to call some of the council members in South Bend and see what they were doing, and we were kinda going back and forth, and the train had started moving down the tracks for me. And then as we were going around campaigning, I was talking about this was something that I would like to implement coming up. And then I found out that uh Councilwoman Carnes was also in that same mindset, and uh she was a little bit further down the tracks at the point than I was. So she continued on, and this is why we have this uh this ordinance out here today. And um so I waited for this to come out to say that I'm gonna jump on as a co-sponsor on this, because this is extremely important to me. Um I live in the Eastport neighborhood, and I see, I see the bad landlords, and some of that happens with all of them, but I do see some um of the issues that we're trying to address with this, and this is extremely important to me. So um I am in support of this, and in in my mind, we have to find a way to make this work. Um some of the the ideas that were brought up were really good ideas, and I'm sure we're gonna have committee meetings um and things like that along the way, where people will be able to come in and give their opinions of things that we can add and and change and things like that. I'll just give an example. We had an ordinance that happened out here on Lake Shore Drive, uh what was that, six months ago or so? Um I may have the timeframe wrong, but we had different things going on, different opinions coming in, and we we just slowed down, uh had more readings and and topped it out until I thought, you know, we got to the the best possible solution with the information that we had, and I can see us doing the same thing here. Uh so we're not gonna try to rush this through, uh jam this through. We are gonna bring in the landlords that have the experience of doing this and make sure we put the product out there that's best for Michigan City. But I think it's extremely important uh for us to have these protections. I wish it would just called rental protection uh because or renter protection because I just, you know, I guess I keep saying it over and over. I think this is really important. Um and I'm actually proud to to be on something like this, because I think this is doing something really good uh for a lot of people here in Michigan City. Um and I I I'm really proud to be involved with this. I'm looking forward to us getting rolling down the tracks with this.
Any other council comments? Councilman Hamilton?
On this program, I know South Bend implemented theirs. I know Maryville, I think Valpo's got one. You know, they say they're effective, but why aren't we enforcing the Property Maintenance Standard Act for the city or even the state? We talk about, you see houses with electrical wiring hanging out. The state has statutes on rentals on electrical, HVAC, and heating and air windows, that kind of stuff. They all have to meet a certain standards. If you see something, turn it in. You know, I just had a meeting, it's been almost a year, so time flies, with the mayor and administration on rentals because the windows were falling out and people were still living there. Mayor said, well, we look at the violations and look at the severity, and we prioritize. Well, if we would prioritize maybe a little differently, this would not be an issue because we would have already fixed these with the Property Maintenance Standard Act. We've got houses that have had blue tarps on their roofs for eight years, homeowners. We've got homeowners that are problems too. Out of the landlords, if we're not turning them in to the state or the city, it's not gonna change. The registration, you're right, the county registers, fire department registers, so we have a registry. So I look at this ordinance and go, we already have all this, we're just not enforcing it. We should just enforce what we have because then we don't have to worry about looking whether it's a landlord or a homer homeowner. Just start enforcing the Property Maintenance Standard Act that we passed as a council or any of the other ordinances that are on the books, and you'll see Michigan City change drastically. Look how many properties you see with tall grass currently. Look how many abandoned properties that were homeowner occupied. You know, I I have a garage that's falling down on somebody's house that actually his son's a city employee. I went to the mayor and said, listen, we need to address this. Well, it's not bad enough. Where do we, why are we not enforcing that? That's my problem. This ordinance is no more than just adding new verbiage to old laws. We shouldn't be looking at it. We just need to enforce what we have. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Councilwoman Carnes?
Um to everybody that uh spoke about the ordinance, so we will undoubtedly be having uh workshops on this uh with landlords, tenants, and any members of the public that would care to attend. Uh tried to jot down some of the questions that were asked. I I didn't get to all of them. I am gonna be asking the uh mayor to add to additional code enforcement people and also to provide um uh support uh for uh part-time support for legal uh in this manner. Uh in terms of the fees, which I think was already mentioned, the state of Indiana uh forbids charging more than five dollars for a registration fee, so um I don't think we'll see that going up any day soon. Um oh, and just to um comment on uh Councilperson Hamilton's remarks. I mean, I received just two weeks ago a call from a a neighbor complaining about the house across the street, and uh he complained that the house had no heat in it. Now, I asked him how he knew that, and he said because the tenant told him that, but of course, the tenant was afraid to complain to the landlord for obvious reasons that they, you know, would get kicked out or in one of these situations where they couldn't afford anything other than some substandard house. So the problem, one of the problems our code enforcement has is if they can't see something, a defect from the outside of the house, it can't go in that house. So you've got people that are living with uh electric severe electrical problems, um heating problems and the like, which uh our code enforcement would never uh be able to address unless they had a complaint from a tenant. And a lot of times, that just doesn't happen. So um um just to sum up, uh we will be having a workshop on this, and I would invite all interested parties to bring their input and try to make this the best ordinance possible. Thank you.
Any other comments from council members?
Yes, I'd also like to be added as a co-sponsor, please.
Please add Councilwoman Silvis as a co-sponsor. And this will be, this is going to be assigned to the Planning and Zoning Committee, which Councilwoman Carnes is the chairman, Councilman Beatrice on it, and Councilman Hamilton on that committee. So Councilwoman Carnes will set up the initial workshop, and that'll be made, you know, public, and whoever wants to attend is free to attend, and then we'll go from there. And just as uh Councilman Dabney stated, uh when there was an issue out in the Sheridan Beach area on the ordinance that was being that was drafted out there, uh there was a lot of things that had to be worked through, and that ordinance took six, seven months to get worked through. So if things take time, it's gonna take time to work through and make sure that what we're gonna do here, that what we're doing here is gonna satisfy what the objective is. You know, being on the city council, we also have to look at the financial, the financial part of this, you know, does this mean we have to hire two more inspectors? Do we have to hire vehicles for these people? Do we have to buy computers for these people? None of those, none of those uh questions have been answered, and I know they haven't been asked yet. But that's all part of the scheme of running a department. So we we're gonna have to find out what all that uh means to the city council before this will be passed. Uh with that being said, this will be held over to our next council meeting for a second reading. Ms Nylev, our next ordinance on first reading by title only without objection?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation of the budget of local option income tax, Lloyd, fund for the purchase of equipment for the Michigan City Police Department, and this is introduced by Mr. Presibulinski.
And Ms Nylev, would you also uh add Councilman Simmons as a co-sponsor?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chief Swistec is here this evening to address the city council on this this ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Mark Swistec, you're Chief of Police. There are two pieces of equipment that this additional appropriation will provide for, and I'd like to first start with um the True Narc Handheld Narcotics Analyzer. What it is, it is a way to allow us to field test narcotics that we recover in the field. This device is able to detect four hundred different substances, where currently we are only able to detect a handful through the current practice that we use, which is um what I'd like to describe as two glass vials that are inside a hard plastic container. We have to remove the top. We have to open the suspected bag of narcotics. Let's say we have a clear sandwich bag that contains a white powdery substance. Our officers have to open up the bag, have to retrieve an amount of the white powdery substance, place it into the white, I'm sorry, into the clear testing package. They then have to seal it, and then they have to break both of the glass vials that are inside of this. To do that, we have had officers, not only with this department, but departments across the nation, that have been injured because the glass has penetrated through the hard plastic, causing a cut to the officer. Therefore, if the officer is not properly prepared and is not wearing the personal protection protective equipment, um the officer is subjected to a possible overdose. What the True Narc Handheld Narcotics Analyzer does, um it literally contains a library that is updated through software technology. It requires no direct contract contact with substances. It delivers a clear, real-time result for presumptive evidence, and what that is, is the field testing allows us to take an individual into custody, charge them with probable cause, and the presumption that the field test that we just tested was either positive for cocaine, meth, heroin, any of those substances. Um this provides an automated tamper-proof records with scanned results, including the date and timestamp that helps expedite prosecution as well. It is accepted by the courts. Many departments across the country have moved to this narcotics analyzer. In fact, the La Porte County High to Drug Task Force currently has one that they utilize as part of their equipment. It was purchased through federal funding. We cannot, however, utilize this device um for our department. It has to remain within the Federal Drug Task Force, and it cannot be utilized outside of that unless a Drug Task Force member is present. Um fentanyl, fentanyl many of you have seen in recent years has emerged into the drug market and is putting drug investigators and police officers at risk across the country. Several departments across the country have stopped field testing narcotics for the mere fact that fentanyl is so deadly. Just last year, two police officers in two different states had overdosed from fentanyl and had to be revived by using Narcan that was on one of their fellow officers. We continually receive DEA warnings of how dangerous fentanyl is to the officers in the field, and therefore, um I feel it is in the best interest for the safety and welfare of our officers and also for the prosecution of our drug investigations that we purchase this piece of equipment for our officers. Um if there are any questions, I would like to answer those before I move on to the second piece of equipment.
Are there any questions? Councilwoman Carnes?
Uh what what's the cost of the True Narc device?
Comes with a five-year warranty and is just shy of thirty-two thousand dollars. Um that is for the device with no annual maintenance fee or anything else um associated to that. The only um other cost associated with it will be the um testing materials that are needed for it annually. Costs a couple hundred dollars a year for that.
Thank you.
Any other, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, or Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh the, this device, there's only gonna be one on the force?
That's correct. It'll be kept in the patrol commander's office, so the officers would come into the patrol commander's office or the device, which is a laser device, could be taken out into the field. It is a handheld device, approximately five inches in diameter. So um another officer or the on-duty shift commander could take it out into the field at a traffic stop or a suspected drug house, and it could be utilized in the field as well. But it will always be present twenty-four hours a day on station and available for use.
And uh you said it would, it could determine uh over four hundred substances?
That's correct.
So like Schedule I stuff, in addition to maybe prescription stuff that someone may possess illegally, you'll be able to detect those as well?
Yes, it also will do depressants, um also will do any type of narcotic prescription drug as well. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council members? Thank you, Chief.
All right. The second piece of equipment, um also it is running just shy of right around thirty-two thousand dollars for this piece of equipment is what they call license plate reader technology. License plate reader technology is currently being utilized across the nation. Currently in our vicinity, the city of New Buffalo, Portage, East Chicago, Whiting, Hammond, Munster, Highland, Hamilton County, Indianapolis, and the Chicago Police Department are utilizing license plate reader technology. What license plate reader technology is, is it enables us to place three outside-mounted cameras on top of a patrol car. The patrol car then on normal routine patrol will then travel throughout the city, and as the vehicle travels throughout the city, the vehicle is recording data, data from every single vehicle that it passes on the roadway. If it is a four-lane um highway, it will capture the majority of those vehicles as well. If the officer comes to a stop at a traffic light, um anything that is nearby, it will record, and also any neighborhood that we drive through, vehicles that are either passing the vehicle or vehicles that are parked on the side of the road or in a driveway, the cameras on this vehicle hit all four corners of the vehicle. What this allows us to do is storage of data. It allows us for plate search, either for a known or partial plate. Um I'd like to give an example. For instance, um the city of Chicago has a homicide tonight. They give out a vehicle description and a license plate number of the vehicle that had left the city of Chicago and fled. All too often, we find in uh crimes of uh that that individuals leave the vicinity of where it occurred and go to another jurisdiction. The plate number is given to us, um once it's entered into the national database. If our patrol vehicle that has this license plate reader technology happens to be on the south side of town, it's scanning vehicles as it comes off of I ninety-four um eastbound, it will be alerted to the officer that is in the car that the vehicle he just passed is wanted for a homicide in another city. This also will alert us to stolen vehicles. If a vehicle is stolen, the license plate is entered into the national database. And um if we pass this vehicle, in fact, it will alert the computer in the car. The officer will turn around and pursue the vehicle. Speaking to the Munster Police Department and the Hammond Police Department, on average, they indicated that about one car per week, they've been recovering stolen vehicles because of the license plate reader technology they have in their community. Um this also allows us to do a locate request. What we can do with that is we can do the most recent, or we can do a most popular search, looking over the analytic data. Um a lot of times in our city, we'll have a large party in a specific neighborhood. Um when we're in that neighborhood, we're scanning plates, we notice that there's a a large gathering in a specific neighborhood. If our license plate reader vehicle goes through that neighborhood, and let's say that we have a crime that occurs during that party, a shooting, for example. If a shooting occurs and an individual said there was a red Chevy Impala out front, that's the vehicle that fled from here. The individual's responsible for the shooting, left in that vehicle. We can automatically get into our database, we can do an analytic search, and we can just put in red Chevy Impala. If we scanned any red Chevy Impala that night, it'll automatically pop up, it will populate. What the license plate reader technology does, it not only takes a picture of the vehicle, but it takes a second picture with a high-definition camera of just the license plate itself. Um another example is, we often receive complaints of drug houses throughout the community. Um sometimes individuals will call in and say, here's the plate numbers, and here's the vehicles I've seen that have been out front of this drug house for the past month. Can you guys do something about it? We can send that information to the officer that is running the license plate reader vehicle for that night. He can go by that drug house five, six, seven times that night. As he passes the house, he doesn't have to do any of the work. The license plate reader technology does everything for him. It will record every vehicle that is out front, photograph it, record the plate number, and then as we do our narcotics investigations, we take an individual into custody. We can put that plate number that the subject was arrested in into the database, and we can show you the locations throughout the city that that vehicle has been known to frequent throughout the community. Um other things that we could do with this uh technology is all of the wrecker and towing companies that are out there doing um that are out there doing repossession of vehicles that the banks are looking for, they also have license plate reader technology. There are several of them throughout our community. So as they are out scanning parking lots in major apartment complexes, residential neighborhoods, all of the data that they are scanning, we now have access to all of their data. So not only is our vehicle scanning and recording and storing data, so is all of the repossession companies that are out there. So again, we have access to a nationwide database. Currently, to date, there have been over three billion detections across the United States from license plate reader technology. Either in apprehending serious wanted felons, stolen vehicles, missing children. There's all kinds of examples. In fact, one that'll hit home with everybody, and this was where Vigilant Solutions, which is the primary company that stores the data, manages the software data, the Times Square bombing. Shortly after the failed terrorist plot to attempt a car bomb in Times Square, license plate reader data from Vigilant Solutions was key in locating the suspects, one of which was apprehended while boarding a flight to the Middle East. It just shows how important this is. All too often, I'm asked, Chief, what are you doing about violent crime? What are you going to do to help reduce violent crime? What can you do to help your officers solve these crimes? This is a great way that an officer can drive the city, he can record data, he can look for individuals that are wanted, vehicles that we're looking for. And then also, what we can do is we can do a geo-base of a specific neighborhood, and then if there's a crime that occurs in that neighborhood, we can either put in a partial license plate number or a vehicle description. We can geomap it, and then we can put a timeframe in there. And anything that we scan that may possibly match that, it will give us some information to use as a lead in our investigation. And many cities across the nation have found this very beneficial. In fact, this particular software also comes with facial recognition. We will not be utilizing it for that, but the state of Nevada, Las Vegas, Nevada, is really ramping up on their facial recognition and their license plate reader technology out there. Vigilant shared with us that that is probably one of their biggest clients right now, and so is the city of Chicago. So everything the city of Chicago is doing right now with their license plate reader technology, we would have that available to us in our database. So us and the city of Chicago would be sharing information. And I know I don't have to tell any of you tonight that we're so close to the city of Chicago that we see many individuals that travel into our community from Chicago. This would be very, very beneficial to our department. It's time I'd like to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Carnes?
So this Vigilant Solutions would be storing data gathered in Michigan City as well, is that?
Yes, and then it is available to anyone that is on the Vigilant platform. So anyone in the nation will also have access to our database.
So that would include people that are not sworn law officers as well?
No, only the towing agencies are not able to get our information, but we are able to get theirs. Law enforcement agencies will be able to have access to ours, just as we have access to theirs, but not anyone in the private sector. No one in repossession, no one in towing, recovery, nothing like that.
So what is the retention policy at Vigilant Solutions?
I'll have to get the answer to that. I do not know what that is. I do know that everything is managed through the cloud, and that there will be a reoccurring annual cost for this at about nineteen thousand dollars a year for the storage management of the system. And that will be added into our contractual services in our 2020 budget.
And so do we know if the employees of Vigilant Solutions, they're not all sworn police officers?
I would say not, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, or the chief?
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Just one. Will this equipment be assigned to one vehicle or one officer? Or how would that work if it's only on?
It will be on one vehicle. There'll be three cameras that'll be mounted on the outside of the vehicle. The vehicle will be an unmarked vehicle that will be assigned to the Uniform Patrol Division as a pool car, and it will be utilized by all three patrol shifts. The officers will have to receive specific training on how to use the software and the equipment. So we plan to train so many officers per shift, and then every shift, the car will be rotated. Some days, that vehicle will run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So we're going to run it as much as we can, but it will be used as a pool car. It will not be taken home by an officer. It will remain on station. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Carnes?
Yeah, I have one other question. Do you know how long it's been in use in Chicago or Hammond?
Munster and Hammond, I believe, is well over ten years. In the city of Chicago, I'm not certain, but I think it's longer than ten years.
Thank you.
When we reached out to Hammond and Munster, they were one of the first in our area to go to it, and they've been very pleased with it. In fact, one of our officers was over, picking up one of our new vehicles over at Minor Electronics, and as he went underneath one of the traffic lights, they have a mounted stationary cameras as well as you come off of the interstate.
Any other questions, or the chief? The chief and I did have a sit-down and talked about both the camera and the drug detection device, yeah. And he did give me a pamphlet on each. I don't know if each council member would like you to email that so they could read more up on these two devices?
I emailed everyone last night.
Okay, all right, so everyone got one then. Okay, so that, that would, there's a lot of information in those packets. And myself, well, I'll wait till, well, I'm the author, so I can go ahead and speak now. Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Very good. Thank you so much.
And myself being the sponsor, and Councilman Simmons being a co-sponsor, a couple of things, and we just heard from the chief, all the specifications and the aspects of what these two devices will do. And certainly, the, the drug testing device, I mean, that there, you can dictate or detect four hundred substances right on the spot. Instead of sending this off to the Indiana State Police Lab and waiting two weeks for a determination of what kind of drug the individual may have at that time, you can take care of the work right then and there, and you can arrest them, and you don't have to wait on going through this process down the line. Then the one with the license plate reader, if we're looking for a tool to be a proactive tool to find criminals in our community, whether they're doing bad things and crimes in our community, or whether they're from out of town, and we're spending time here, I mean, what more of a device would you want than something like this? So you can just ride up and down the block and read license plates. You can go to a motel parking lot and read license plates. And if there's a license plate there that hits, that belongs to a vehicle that's been involved in a crime, you could do your police work right then and there, instead of spending months trying to chase somebody down that you may never, ever catch. To me, I know that Councilman Beatry uses this phrase quite a bit, and I'm going to use it now. To me, this is kind of a no-brainer, as a police work goes, and being proactive in trying to fight crime in our, our community. So those are my two comments on this. Councilman Simmons, you have anything you'd like to add to this since being an author?
I concur.
Okay. With that being said, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Roger Willoughby, 401 East Seventh Street, Michigan City, Indiana. My only question, without a doubt, I believe they need the equipment. My question to the chief is, the annual fee, does that stay for the department, or is that for the vehicle?
Great question, Roger. The annual fee covers the storage of the data, allows us to do all the software upgrades. And then every year thereafter, they give us three additional cameras so we can continue to build out our fleet, so we can add a second vehicle. Or we can go to stationary cameras at intersections if we choose to do so as well. But that is included in the annual fee as well, that the department would pick up in our contractual services. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, any, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this? Any further council comments? Any further council comments? All right, this will be held over to our next council meeting. And next on the agenda is the ordinance on second reading. Approving additional, oh, Ms. Nylob, by title only, without objection, please? She's trying to move along a little bit too quick.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the riverboat fund for costs incurred by the Fire Merit Commission for advertising costs for new hires and academy training for new hires. And this is introduced by Mr. Hamilton.
And would the author like to add anything at this time? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? I know. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Roger Willoughby, 401 East Seventh Street, Michigan City, Indiana. I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here, but I attended the meeting two weeks ago, and it was at twelve thousand, and then he upped it five thousand. And there was zero questions about it. My question is, what is this for? You're telling me those contractual service fire commission fees, is it for the, the newspaper, and we're just rubber stamping numbers here? There was zero rebuttal when it was at twelve, when it went to seventeen?
I think, I may be, I think that the addition was for an additional fire, fire officer, I mean, fireman that was coming on because one left, right?
It was retire reasons.
Yeah.
So it's overtime?
No.
No, for training of an additional fireman.
The extra five thousand was to train the new officer that they're going to have to send because one came in on Monday, the day before the council.
Right, it was a last-minute thing. I remember you saying that.
Resilience. So it costs about five thousand dollars to get the training process started and training on firemen.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, any council comment? Council comment? And let me just say that there was a formal public hearing on this ordinance. Or there was formal public hearing this evening, I'm sorry. Should have been, I should have said that before we started on it. Okay, we are done with our ordinances. Unfinished business this evening. The common council has one appointment, the Youth Leadership Commission, and the appointment is for a two-year term. And the nominee is to be a Marquette High School student. And the nominees are Travon Moore and Alyssa Murillo. Councilman Fitzpatrick?
I'd like to nominate Travon Moore.
This is for the vote?
No, we vote. This eve, we vote this evening. We nominated at the last meeting. Okay, so we we will take, we will take the vote. So either Travon Moore or Alyssa Murillo, and Ms. Nylob will take the vote by councilman, councilperson.
All right.
Ms. Nylob?
Mr. Hamilton?
Murillo.
Can you say the first name, please? Okay, Alyssa?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Prozabulinski?
Travon Moore.
Ms. Silbas?
Alyssa Murillo.
Mr. Simmons?
Travon Moore.
Mr. Stemley? Mr. Beatry?
Alyssa Murillo.
Mr. Dabney?
Travon Moore.
Ms. Carnes?
Travon Moore.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Travon Moore.
We have six for Travon and three for Alyssa.
Okay, on our new business, there's our new business. Comments from the public? Anyone from the public who wish to speak on any subject? Anyone from the public wish to speak on any subject? Anyone from the public wish to speak on any subject? Public comment is closed. Comments from the council. Councilman Dabney?
Just real quick, the vote we just took between Travon Moore and Alyssa Murillo just left a bad taste in my mouth for some reason. We're picking between two youth that want to get involved and I understand the way this is written and the way it's set up, but we found two people. And I don't know why it left a bad taste in my mouth to have to pick between two young people trying to get involved. And in my mind, I wish we could take them both. I don't know, I just wanted to stress that and express that because, I don't know, it just left a bad taste in my mouth making it vote between two young people like that.
They can always attend the commission meetings. Commission meetings are open to the public, so keep that in mind.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
I think the proper process Marquette should have decided, and then only sent us one name.
Right. Well, would that be something that we'd have to look at, the ordinance, and, and correct the ordinance? That if you're going to say, if Marquette's going to send a representative, that they only send one representative, and they vote who they want, and then they send it on to the city council for us to approve on it?
The way the ordinance was written, it was supposed to be someone of their selection that was part of their student government. Aside from that, any teen within the age of sixteen or twenty-two or whatever was eligible to apply.
Right, but what I'm saying is let Marquette decide, who they want to send to the city council, and then we approve it.
Correct, that's what should have happened.
Okay, all right. Any other comments from council members? Councilwoman Carnes?
Yes, I would like to invite Alyssa Murillo to join the Sustainability Commission because we're looking for a Marquette student, so if she's listening, ask Marquette to nominate her and send her our way. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Uh, the Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, I did have a comment, and this was from an incident that occurred a couple of weekends ago. And I've been contacted by phone, as well as other people on the council have been. And I've been hit up with access to links from videos or whatever. There was a excise sweep, I guess, at one of our local establishments, and what appeared to happen was everyone was shut down and locked in, basically detained. And in addition to the excise, they were actually, they were sat down at desks, and there were laptops and computers, and they were running everyone for warrants. Now, I'm not sure if that's all covered by excise, and it's, we have the chief here today, so maybe he can clear it up for me, but I'm not, it seems like they were checking everyone's for warrants, and it didn't meet what my understanding of how excise works. And it was kind of eerie watching this. I know one of the videos I saw, a young lady had pretty graphic language, and kind of had to work through that to get to manage what was going on. But we also heard in the background, I just kept hearing, next, next, next. And you know, everyone was lining up and giving their information to be ran for warrants, and I didn't understand how that's possible with the Constitution still being the supreme law of the land. And there was another video that someone took it upon themselves to make, and they referred to us Michigan City residents as sheep. And I don't particularly care for that, and it's a little bit disturbing and disappointing that someone would refer to us as that without having all of the information, all the details. And from where I was able to work it, from my end, from the phone calls that I had and contacting some other people that were present, it did seem like there was a little more than just excise going on. And I'd like to know what was going on and how we plan to deal with that because I would hate to see the city open up to liabilities. I mean, I don't know if we've had, we've had any tort claim submissions or anything to that effect, but if there is a violation to that magnitude, there may be some recourse, and the city will be held liable. So I'd like to get some clarification on that.
Good evening again. I'll start by saying there's a lot of misinformation that's out there. And I'd like to start with the press release that was sent out this afternoon. All of you should have received a copy of it from the mayor's office. In the early morning hours of June twenty-third, twenty-nineteen, the Indiana State Police Excise requested the assistance of Michigan City Police Department to accompany them to Local Options Bar for an inspection. Since that inspection, the mayor's office has been receiving numerous questions. Since that inspection, the mayor's office has been receiving numerous questions and concerns regarding that inspection based on a video that was posted by a patron on social media. The mayor's office is investigating this matter. In addition, the Indiana Excise Police, who were the lead agency of the inspection of Local Options Bar, are conducting their own internal investigation and review. Any further inquiries can be directed to the Indiana Excise Police Public Relations Office, and then it has the information to contact that individual. My office as well has fielded several calls, references, in fact, I've received even death threats on the phone from people who live well outside the state of Indiana. I know I shared one of them with our council president, who was quite taken back by that phone call, as I was. Many of these individuals that are calling are not residents of LaPorte County, not residents of the state of Indiana, and they're only wishing to cause discord in our community. I can only assure you that my office, the mayor's office, our city attorney, and the Indiana Excise Police are all looking at the operational plan and everything that was done on that particular evening. This was, and I can say with one hundred percent certainty, an excise police operation. They reached out to us, asked to use our community room as a briefing room, where they brought in six excise police officers, and then four of our uniformed officers, who were accompanied by two of their probationary officers, for a total of six officers, in Michigan City uniforms, accompanied the excise police to the establishment that evening. Excise was in charge of the operation, this was asked for by them at their request, not at my request, nor the city of Michigan City's request. They do these often throughout the state, they are allowed to conduct these administrative compliance checks. There were no arrests, no citations, and no individuals searched by the officers of the Michigan City Police Department that evening. Excise had issued, I believe, some warnings that had to do with administrative violations of the bar and that, but I'll let them speak on that. But I can only speak on behalf of the Michigan City Police Officers, they did not arrest anyone, nor did they issue any citations, and they were working side by side with the excise police that particular evening. So I hope that helps clarify that. I am still continuing to go through body camera footage. As you know, this council had approved funding for body cameras for our staff, so I've already reviewed two of the body cameras that were there, and from what I have found thus far, our officers were professional, polite, and in no way were rude to any of the patrons that were in there. The individual that posted the video online, she could have left at any point, but she decided to stay. The reason she stayed is because her father is a manager of the bar, so she thought that it would be in her best interest to stay in video, where it makes it look like she was detained, but she could have left. So, but she did take a video, it is out there, it's gone viral, just like anything on Facebook, a lot of people want to believe it's on Facebook, it's the truth. I'll tell you, if anybody knows the abuse that Facebook can bring you, he's standing in front of you tonight. So I don't believe anything that's out there, nor do I have social media, just for that very reason. So I hope that helps clarify some of that, but I can assure that either the mayor, I, or the city attorney can give you an update once we conclude our looking into this matter.
Mr. President? I have a question.
Councilman?
Can you confirm that the rumor mill has it that everyone was herded together, no one could leave, and everybody was held against their will, but I'm hearing that people who were there walked out the back door and were not stopped? They could have left, and they did, because they looked like they were of age. So not everyone was like herded up as cattle and prevented from leaving, because a lot of people did walk out?
That's correct, Councilman Beatry. When I reviewed two of the cameras just yesterday afternoon, what I found is that several people walked towards the front door, spoke to an excise officer, then exited the establishment. Several people throughout the encounter when we were in there continued to play pool, continued to drink, continued to smoke, sat at their tables, business as normal. And then at some point, a lot of them were moved from one location into another room, and then were asked to walk out the front, stay out front until the compliance check was completed, and they were allowed to come back in, and that was all at the direction of the excise police.
Any more questions by council members or inquiries? Chief, I'm glad you're here tonight to get that clarified, because I had phone calls and phone messages left at my house, and to go back and discuss, but I do want to mention that voice message that you sent to me, and you said that it was very disturbing.
Very disturbing.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, if the public knows about it, but I'm going to say it, because it was very sad and despicable, that this voice message, which was left to the chief, that basically, the gentleman said that all police officers should be dead, and that that was the information sent out, and didn't leave a name, didn't leave an address, so whoever this individual was, it's just terrible, and of course, I emailed you back, and you know, what kind of law or whatever we can go after, you know, an individual saying that kind of thing, you know, to police officers in that way, it's unacceptable, so...
It is, and we find often that people hide behind social media, they hide behind anonymous phone calls, and I can only tell you that some of the people I did try to call back to discuss this matter with, there was no discussion with them. It was an argument, it was threats, so we haven't even been returning phone calls to many of them, because it's a waste of my time, and it's just an embarrassment on their part, that there's no professionalism on these people.
Okay, thank you very much, chief. Any other comments by council members? Having none? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
It's four.
Second by Councilman Dabney, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.